Twenty twenty one, City of Tuolton, regular council meeting. Looks like, according to my computer, we went down a whop at three degrees. We're now at a hundred and ten. So we'll go in the right direction for tonight. So let's go ahead and call this meeting into order. And we'll lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Councilor Sacco.
Good evening, everybody. If you please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to the moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen led by Councilor Brooks.
Good evening, Council. Well, and everyone, at least during such a hard time with the temperature out there, we didn't have any new deaths to report in the state of Oregon over the last reporting day. So the total cases in Oregon are two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. And the total deaths from COVID nineteen is two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three. And we are just over nineteen thousand people eighteen and over away from reaching seventy percent in our state. Please join me in a moment of silence for people that are suffering or that we have lost from COVID nineteen. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. So with that, next up, we're going to announcements. And I believe this is Chief Steel with our Fourth of July reminders.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Bill Steele, your chief of police. This announcement was was put on your agenda, you know, well before our recent weather hit us. I think at one point today, my phone showed a hundred and fifteen degrees. So there's probably no better time to discuss fireworks safety. You know, currently, you can purchase local Oregon safe and sane fireworks. You know, I personally would ask that our community not, you know, you know, use fireworks this year. The conditions are so hazardous right now that the margin for error is just so slim. So that would be my request. And every year, we often have a number of people that venture out across the state into Washington and other places to buy illegal fireworks that are not permitted in Oregon and set those off on a regular basis. Those, if you're caught, could result in a Class B misdemeanor citation and a fine of up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So we definitely don't want people partaking in that. Generally speaking, we're always looking for voluntary compliance. And if that doesn't work, you know, we'll educate and use warnings. But again, in these weather conditions, if we were to find somebody in possession or using illegal fireworks, our odds of giving citations are probably not going to be very good for you this year. So we want people to remember to utilize nine-one-one in emergency situations and reporting things, but use non-emergency if possible. Non-emergency number for everybody listening in Washington County is five zero three six two nine zero one one one. And if you happen to be out in Clackamas County, you can always reach that number at five zero three six five five eight two one one. Again, that's kind of, you know, the Fourth of July is really for the amount of calls that come in. It's our busiest time of the year. It's our busiest day of the year. Our dispatch center is overwhelmed with calls reporting fireworks. So that really takes up a lot of time from our dispatchers and our first responders that are handling normal day-to-day things that come in every single day without fireworks. So please, 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 if you can, avoid these fireworks this year. And can definitely use an abundance of caution if possible. You know, just in the last five years in Oregon alone, there's been about twelve hundred firework-related fires resulting in about five million dollars worth of damage. And that doesn't even include the two thousand and seventeen Eagle Creek Fire in the Columbia River Corge that honestly burned for eight months is what it took to finally put that thing completely out. So that is my message tonight. Please utilize as much safety as possible if you are going to use those fireworks this year. So that's that's my message, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And usually, TVFNR does a tag team with Chief Steel on this. There's also a drain, TVFNR's resources to run it out, run around putting out fires, especially now that they're being being so dry. So any questions for Chief Steel about fireworks on Fourth of July? Can you say the number again, the non-emergency number for Washington County and Clackamas County?
Yeah, Washington County number is five zero three six two nine zero one one one. And the Clackamas County number is five zero three six five five eight two one one.
So any questions for Chief? Councilor Pratt?
TVFNR going to speak too, also?
No, they're not here tonight. They usually are.
Okay. Um, I'm I'm seriously concerned with the dry conditions and the expected temperature of ninety. And so I would like to add to the end of general business an item to discuss an emergency ordinance to ban the use of fireworks this year to our agenda tonight, if that's possible.
Okay. All right. We'll do that. Any other questions, comments for Chief? Right? Hey, Chief?
You bet.
That brings us to public comment. Public comment, it's an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this will be the appropriate time. And I know I've got a chat that Patricia Parsons is wanting to speak. And it looks like I've got Tyler Eaton after that. So Patricia, you're first, then Tyler.
Okay, thank you. It took me a minute to figure out how to unmute this.
You can have it a year, it takes a while.
I gotta tell you, I think it's the heat. And this is another reason why I'm not going to go on camera. I'm a hot mess, like I'm sure everybody else feels. But thank you, Council, Mayor, and the city for letting me speak. I'm going to be very brief about this. I am encouraged to hear that a meeting was held with the gun range. Thank you very much for reporting that. I'd like to know when the council has set up the working session, as I'd like to attend that as well. And I'm very interested in attending a meeting with with the range so that I can report back to our community, the findings, the status, the proposal, the progress, et cetera. All this said, I do want to just reiterate that I am, I have finished my letter to the press. I intend to send this out in the next couple of weeks and hope to get this out to not only Tuolton, but the whole entire Portland metropolitan area. I also want to let the group know that I, as we work through the growth of Tuolton, I feel that it would be irresponsible for us, number one, as citizens, to not call the police when we hear gunfire. This is crazy that we have become so immune to this sound that we just let it go. So when it's when it's loud, when I hear it, I will be calling the police. And I'm going to encourage all of us as neighbors to do the same. I can't imagine how any of us would feel if we were wrong in our assumption that it was coming from the range and there was some mass shooting at Ibach Park or at Costco or anywhere else. I also want to let the group know that as we work through the growth of Tuolton, I feel that it would be irresponsible for us not to let developers and current landowners know of the potential problems for selling property due to this incredibly unnatural and dangerous sound. So I do have an email out to Linnar Homes. I know that they're slated to develop over four hundred homes in our area. And I think that they need to know, and so do other landowners, that this could be a problem. So I guess that's all I really wanted to say and report back. I thank you again for your time and your energy and for you listening. Thanks.
Thanks, Patricia. Next up is Mr. Tyler Eaton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members for this opportunity. I do preface that the situation that I'm raising awareness to overall impacts a small percentage of Tuolton residents. But for those that it impacts, it significantly impacts quality of life. I'm a resident of twelve, thirteen years. And where we live on Sagard Street, we live on one of two unpaved public streetways. And over the last decade, we have raised this concern multiple times to the city of Street Sewer Management. And we are in between a rock and a hard place where the developer of these properties back in the seventies agreed to pave the street and the city agreed to maintain it, and the developer failed to pave it. And so the city agrees to maintain it, but has failed to do so over the last decade. It has been paved twice, once of which has just been this last spring, after several attempts of reaching out to the city for help and assistance. We are unable to even get quotes for even a chip coat or a tar seal. Dust management is the biggest thing. But since it is a public-owned street, no one will come out and look at it unless the street, the city asks of that. But the city is unwilling to do so at this time. We have a lot of cars that come in, especially with Amazon. We're across from the marquee rehab center. And so traffic is pretty bad as a turnaround, even though the city has put a please don't do that signs to deter that. That does not work. Our neighbor also just started an in-home care for residents. And so we have emergency vehicles coming in regularly, all times throughout the day, as well as cars coming in and staying overnight in our cul-de-sac because there's no light. And so they hide in the darkness. We had a neighbor's backyard broken into just this last weekend, which then again kind of elevated this ongoing battle. And so again, I know this doesn't impact the city at large, but for those that it does as taxpayers for the quality of life and those of us with young kids on this cul-de-sac, it's a frustrating and helpless situation to be in and looking for wisdom, help, guidance, and how we can move forward, finding a resolution.
I know Councilor Hillier brought this up to our city manager. And Cheryl and Juan both have looked into it and has discovered the same, like you had just said, that the street never got got built out as it should have. So I know they're looking at, city staff is looking at this right now. And I ask you to give them a couple of weeks to circle back. Because the biggest thing obviously is probably going to be budget and how we get this done. So give us some time to figure out how we can do that because it's not going to be a minor thing to do.
I understand.
To bring your street up to current standards. But we are aware of it. We, and I know Cheryl and her team are working on it as is council, so we will not forget about you. And keep in touch and circle back with us or me in a couple of weeks and I'll let you know where we're at.
Absolutely. Well, in advance, thank you for whatever the solution is. We really appreciate it.
All right, I appreciate you or whoever reached out to Councilor Hillier to bring it to our attention.
You bet. Have a good night.
You too. Is there anyone else in this Zoom meeting or at the Cooling Center, which is open till nine o'clock tonight because it's so hot? Is anyone there? Is Megan there? Is anybody from staff there?
I'm here.
All right.
There is nobody here to provide public comment.
All right, they're just chilling. All right. With that, that ends, I guess, public comment. So we'll move into the consent agenda. Items in the consent agenda are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of ten items, quite a bit. So item one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Item two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Bottles and Press LLC, DBA straightaway. Number three, consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for the Three Mermaids Public House. Item number four, consideration of resolution number five 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 two dash twenty-one, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for a metro area communications commission grant and appropriating and appropriating special purpose revenues in the city's general fund during fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one budget. Item five, consideration of resolution number five 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 four dash twenty-one, amending the City of Tuolton fee schedule and rescinding resolution number five five oh four dash twenty. Item six, consideration of resolution number five 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 dash two one, approving the authorization and approving and authorizing provision of workers' comp insurance to volunteers at the City of Tuolton. Item seven, consideration of resolution number five 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 six dash two one, authorizing personnel services updates for non-representative employees of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Item eight, consideration of resolution number five 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 seven dash twenty-one, amending water, sewer, stormwater, and road utility fee rates inside the City of Tuolton and rescinding resolutions five five zero five dash twenty and five five one two dash twenty. Item nine, consideration of resolution number five 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 eight dash twenty-one, authorizing changes to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, adopt the budget. And finally, item ten, consideration of resolution five five six zero dash twenty, awarding the contract for construction of the Tuolton Road Sweep Drive to Community Park Phase One project, which is part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program. Is there any items on the consent agenda a council would like removed? I don't see any hands up.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All right. Council Pratt?
Aye.
Councilor Hillier?
Aye.
Councilor Sacco?
Aye.
Councilor Brooks?
Aye.
Councilor Rez?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Error approved. That moves us into special reports, the annual report of the Walton Historical Society. I see Mr. Ross Baker and Ross Huber, the two Rosses in the meeting. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Council and Mayor. I am here to introduce the executive director of the Tuolton Historical Society. And Ross Baker is going to give you a presentation and the annual report of the great organization that we're partnered with. So I, Ross Baker, I will share my screen and Ross Baker will talk about all the great things that have happened in the past year. Are you there, Ross?
You're muted.
It's so embarrassing, I'm sorry. I do this for a living. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, go past this slide. We got to make up some time. We had to learn on the fly with the pandemic. You can see on this slide, there's all kinds of things we had planned for twenty twenty. We didn't do any of them. But when you have a time, take a look at what we didn't do. Let's move on to what we did accomplish in twenty twenty. We had a lot of great programs. Once we got our wings underneath us and got some momentum, lots of learning that we did, lots of oral histories that were recorded. And we're really proud of what we were able to accomplish, even though we got a couple of months late start. Okay, go ahead. Even beyond our presentations, the things you might see on social media and stuff that we're doing in the background, we're doing all kinds of things. You know, we have the new Riolite, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Glacier Rock now at the Heritage Site. The center is open Monday through Thursday, ten to three. We're working on getting open full five days as we used to do. We're doing our old histories. We're harvesting from our archives to continue to populate our new webpage. We have task forces in place to focus in certain areas that we think we're weak on. We're continuing through the whole thing to do our quarterly newsletter. And if you're not getting that, become a member so you can because it's pretty cool. And we're going to go back to our annual picnic this year. One more thing before we leave this one. We're working with Carlos Horkos, who did the Centennial Watercolors for the City of Tuolton. He wants to work with us to help us raise money by doing some local paintings and stuff. So we're really proud of that, too. Okay? Probably the most worthy thing that we did in twenty twenty was a, a couple of books are going to be coming out. One is already out. It's Tuolton. It's When the River Ran Backwards. It's the story of when the big, bad Lake Oswego Steel Corporation went against some small onion farmers and they were redirecting the river and the guys blew up the dam. And the thing that's coolest about this book, well, there's two things that are cool. We had a PSU intern, Jamie Ditzel, did it for us. And the second thing that's really cool is Lois Martinazzi actually gave up the names that her father told her, the three guys that did it. And and they're in the book, so it's really a tell-all and we love it. It's for sale at the Heritage Center. Pop in and talk to Cindy. And even perhaps more important, that our third edition of Tuolton From the Beginning, this is our Bible. This is really our important book. It's coming out probably in like August, early September timeframe. And it's going to be bigger and better because we're going to cover where it stopped last time, two thousand and five, until today, which means there's thirty new subjects that are added to the end of the book that we determined to be history-worthy. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Ross. I wouldn't be an annual report without talking about the Latkey Martinazzi Award, which went to Michael Antonelli with the Tuolton Life, all the great things he's done working with us. And of course, Lois Roby, the President's Award. She does a lot of work in the background. And if any of you know us or you see her, just say hello and thank you. The scholarship continued and was bigger and better than ever. The Scholarship Committee actually gave out two awards this year because of the pandemic. And the first is like a three thousand dollar, the second is a two thousand. So these are pretty big scholarships. And we're really proud of what we're able to do for these young people who decide that they're going to study inside the state of Oregon. Not necessarily history, but they need to study in Oregon. So the newly renamed scholarship, the Jack Broome Scholarship, is alive and well. Thank you. Our webpage, we're so proud of our new webpage. We used a lot of the grant monies that we 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 got during the year. If you haven't been there, you need to go because it has articles, oral histories, things that you would expect us to have. But then there's some other stuff that you would be surprised that we have, like an interactive walking tour of Tuolton's historic sites. We have, of course, our online store. There's no paywall yet, but you can see what we have for sale and on and on. There's some pretty cool stuff there. And because we don't have it fully populated yet, at the end of each section, you can always click and you can go into our digital attic and you can see what's not on the webpage there. It's not so fancy, but it's there. You can look at all kinds of old articles and photos and oral histories and so forth. Okay? Thank you. And I think the crowning achievement of the year was us getting recognized by being the outstanding volunteer group of the year. Of course, we shared this with another organization or two, but it's the second year in a row we've been so recognized. And Art Suzuki, our board member, probably said it best. And he said, down at the bottom, just to get right to the heart of what he said, that we facilitate Tuolton's continuing exceptional civic awareness, pride, and depth. And I think that Art probably said it best for the whole board. Okay? Oh, there's some additional information, like, which I can't share with you tonight, but it's available. If you want to do a deep dive about our membership, it's up five percent for the last five years. We've improved our membership numbers financially. We remain healthy. We're about where we were when we reported in two thousand and nineteen, but we've done okay. We did get grants. We also did get PPP, the Payroll Protection Plan. We have a complete rundown of how we spent that money or how we retained it because some of it went into our coffers. And we have a report on that. We did lose our home for the Galworth wagon, is the old farm wagon. It's a hundred plus years old. It went out to Lee's Farm. The city had worked with us to find a place for that. And we did identify potential location. And then the pandemic had, and we even had donors matching fund, potential matching funds things, which would have paid for a lot of it. But the budget for the whole thing to build a shelter was even beyond what we were willing to do at the beginning of a pandemic. So we're thinking more about maybe a private opportunity for the near term, but we'll see. We, that's one of our challenges for next year. And our board, we have a couple of openings on our board. In case you know, some history-loving people that would like to apply for those, we would love to have them. And I think that that's it. I'm at the end, Ross, right?
Well, thank you, Ross. I had the website is pretty phenomenal. I remember when you did the soft opening of it, I went to it. It was night and day versus the old website. And it's a tremendous resource, just the pictures and the history in there is tremendous. And the ability to search easily is very nice. So thank you for your, all your service at the Historical Site and the board members. It's a really good group of folks that are keeping our, you know, history alive. I know Lois Martinazzi puts her heart and soul into that book and the updates that she published. And she's our, you know, one-person historian of everything Tuolton. So pretty much, well, appreciate everything she's done on behalf of the Historical Site and as well as other folks. Any questions or comments for either of the Rosses? Council Pratt?
I just want to say thank you for the Historical Society. Year after year, you guys are fiscally responsible. And even though you're recording history, you move forward in the way you do it and the people you, whose histories you record. And you've just, you do an amazing, unbelievable job year after year. So just thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to having some meetings again inside the facility. It's been a long time. Last time I was in there was for the Cowboy Poet. There was only, what, about eight of us in there, Ross? So.
And this October, Mayor Brubinick is going to be our guest on one of our programs. So we'll be publicizing that.
All right. Anything else for any of the Rosses? Either of the Rosses, not any of the Rosses? All right. Thank you, Ross. Ross B., thank you for joining tonight.
Okay. Bye-bye.
All right. That brings us to public hearings. Item number one, consideration of resolution number five 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 nine dash twenty-one, adopting the City of Tuolton budget for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-one, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes and categorizing the levies. Don, what kind of title is that? That's a tongue twister.
Well, one I think I have to include on there. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, by connection, it keeps coming in and out a little bit, so hopefully I'll get through everything I need to get through. I am Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and your Finance Director and the one who just loves to do this for at least six months or more out of the year. We, you do have in front of you resolution number five 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 nine dash twenty-one. I won't read that whole part since the mayor did such a wonderful job with it a second ago. But that is what is in front of you. Oregon statutes require the city council to adopt the budget prior to July first, twenty twenty-one. So that's why we are here this evening. I did, so you don't have in your packet because I put together a quick PowerPoint this afternoon. So let me share my screen. And that way, when I go through a bunch of numbers, you'll have them in front of you to see. So what is in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget? Is the expenditures to continue providing the quality services that your city staff and others provide to our residents and our customers. COVID nineteen pandemic impacts primarily on the revenue side, but they do have some impact, of course, on the expenditure side as well. I like. Can Pat, you report?
Mind, Don, you got to come back.
Less of an impact than we've impacted, we programmed into the budget and we forward here. The first one was toward the revenues and expenditure passed a couple of months ago that was exempted to receive from the federal. The resolution also sets our tax rates, our permanent tax rate of two dollars, twenty-six, sixty-five cents per one thousand dollars of assessed value. And also on our general obligation bond debt, we levy a dollar amount of three million, ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for our general obligation bond debt. And that averages out to be about fifty-nine cents per thousand of assessed value. I'm happy to report that this budget also continues our fiscal prudence and it is a positive ongoing alignment going forward as well. So back in May, when we went to the Budget Committee, the city proposed a budget of a hundred and twenty-one, just over a hundred and twenty-one point three billion dollars. There were some amendments that we proposed to the Budget Committee during that process of total about six point eight million dollars. The large, over six point one million of that is the American Rescue Plan money and that new fund, as well as some other carryovers that we programmed into the budget that we presented to the Budget Committee and they approved them that evening. And so on May twenty-fifth, the Budget Committee approved a budget of a hundred and thirty-five, just under a hundred and thirty-five point two million dollars. You can see on your screen there. In addition to the budget that is approved by the- In addition to the budget that is approved by the Budget Committee, the council has the ability to change the adopted budget by no more than 10% of the total budget in each fund. We are proposing some changes in the general fund this evening. The first three are carryovers. And what these are for are items that we anticipated when we put the budget together to be received by June 30th. And there are some that we realize that are not... And so we need to carry them over into fiscal year 2021, 2022. Our beginning fund balance increases to offset this. Since you don't see the revenue side, that's handled there. But the ones we have this evening are $10,000 in the administration budget, which is where we budget our outside legal for our labor negotiations. We had anticipated being a little further worse, so we're asking to carry over $10,000. On the Police Department budget, we're asking for an increase of $7,650, and it's actually made up of two different components. We have an ammunition order that is significantly backordered, and we will not see that product come in until I believe it's September. And so we're asking for that to be carried over, as well as an amplifier for our radio system, which has not been installed yet. And so we're asking a carryover. That as well. And then the library, if you haven't had a chance to go in and see the Makerspace classroom, it is nearly complete. It's not fully open yet, but it is a outstanding, beautiful... Some of the equipment has not been carried over of those funds as well. Happening in 2022, how we had some recent leak placement up into the 2120, that replacement to be added. Now, the reason you see a negative here as well is on the expenditure side, so it's an increase in the maintenance services budget, then on the general fund, non-departmental, where we have our unappropriated fund balance in our reserves, we're reducing that budget by this amount and just moving it into the maintenance services budget. So there's a net add to the budget, completely zero. It's just going from one budget to another. So what we're asking for this evening, excuse me, is an adopted budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 of $135,205,650. And by adopting the attached resolution, the city will be able to operate, expend money and incur liabilities for this upcoming fiscal year, which will begin on Wednesday or Thursday, July 1st. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and I'll stop sharing my screen.
Questions for Don before he freezes up again on us? No questions for Don? Everything looks good? So no questions or have a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, just before the motion, since it's under a public hearing, I'm sure there's not many prepared, but...
Sure. So that, thank you, Sean, for reminding me, is public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this resolution, either for or against? Not seeing any hands going up or... No one in the Poll Center, Megan, opposed with comments on the budget?
Nope, nobody at the Poll Center and nobody let me know via Zoom call that they'd like to speak either.
All right. With that, Council Pratt?
I would like to motion that we adopt resolution number 5559-21. Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, it's a resolution, so they're in order, so we don't have to do it all, you know, first or second. So I have a motion.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 5559-21. Any discussions on those motions? All right. Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. The budget is adopted, all right, for next year, next fiscal year. Thank you, Don. All right. So moving on to general business. Item number one on the general business is considerations and recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Who's gonna talk about the folks who are nominated and approved?
Thank you.
That was a big delight. This is Council Reyes, Brooks and Pratt, I believe, are on the...
Do you want us to just talk about it or is there anything you want?
Usually we list the names of the folks so they get some recognition, so we know who's contributing their time to the city and what capacity.
I can't find the name to the folks, sorry. On my agenda. But I just, you know, I'm always proud to serve at this committee and welcome everyone that wants to join any kind of these committees, to please look at that. But I can't find the names on my agenda, the names of the people for the Architectural Committee.
I can read them off real quick. So we have, what, six reappointments for the Architectural Review Board, those being Skip Scan... God, I'm getting tongue-tied. Skip Stanaway, Lisa Crottocho, sorry if I murdered that, Nicole George, Carol Bellows, Patrick Gaynor and Chris Goodell. And then on the Tualatin Arts Advisory Committee, our student is Mahadi Sridhar. And on the Tualatin Parks Advisory Committee, our representative is Nadia Alvarado.
All the people were reappointments, including our students had served. And as usual, all of them were so impressed with the dedication they had to our city and their willingness to give back. So as usual, very impressive people, we're fortunate to have in our city.
We got great core volunteers in the city. So with that, we just have to approve it. So I have a motion to approve the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments.
So moved? Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations. Any discussion on the motion? Boy, people shifted around here. Council Hillier, you're first now.
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
And Council President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote...
Thank you all very much for volunteering.
Yes, I vote aye also. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5561-21, establishing a policy to provide workers' compensation coverage to future members of the council as volunteers of the city. So who's leading this discussion? That's a brain twister.
Well, I don't... Before we get to who will cover it, there are, I think, some statements of potential conflict that need to be stated.
All right. So we doing that first before we get into the presentation? Okay. All right. So we've got seven members. I gotta scroll through here, just a sec. And because this deals with compensation, some members, we have to declare if there is a conflict of interest, because this does affect compensation per a new Oregon law for city councilors. So I'll go through the city council members and they can state whether or not they have a conflict of interest in this item. So I'll start with Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. I am declaring an actual conflict of interest. This resolution would provide a workers' compensation coverage benefit to me during my current term of office. As a result, I am not participating in any discussion and am refraining from voting on this matter.
All right. Council Pratt?
I'm also declaring an actual conflict of interest. This resolution would provide workers' compensation coverage benefit to me during my current term in office. And as a result, I am not participating in any discussion and refraining from voting on this matter.
All right. Council Reyes?
I'm actually declaring a potential conflict of interest. This resolution will provide workers' compensation coverage to council members beginning January 1st, 2023. My current term of office ends in 2022. However, I'm eligible for reelection and if I am reelected, I could be provided this workers' compensation benefit during a future term in office.
Council Brooks?
Like Council Reyes, I am declaring a potential conflict of interest. This resolution would provide workers' compensation coverage to council members beginning January 1st, 2023. My current term of office ends in 2022. However, I am eligible for reelection and if I am reelected, I could be provided this workers' compensation benefit during a future term in office.
All right. Council Sacco?
I am declaring an actual conflict of interest. This resolution would provide a workers' compensation coverage benefit to me during my current term of office. As a result, I am not participating in any discussion and I am refraining from voting on this matter.
All right. Thank you. Council President Grimes?
To add to this fun trolley of people that are jumping out of the discussion, I am term limited as of next year, but out of an abundance of caution, there is a potential, potential, future, possible, potential conflict of interest. And for that reason, I will abstain from the conversation and from voting tonight. If... No, I'm not. I see that I'm not. I see rather that I'm going to participate in the discussion and probably vote, even though I might have a possible, potential, future conflict in ten years plus the end of my term. I could have two, so thank you.
Thank you, Council President Grimes.
Thank you for all my backup singers there. I appreciate it.
I'm also gonna be like Council President Grimes and declare potential conflict of interest. This resolution will provide workers' compensation coverage to council members beginning January 1st, 2023. My current term of office ends in 2022, but in the future, 10 years from, you know, with term limits, I could run again in 10 years. And this workers' compensation could be provided as a benefit in a future term of office. All right. So we covered it all now, Sherilyn?
Yes, thank you. And I believe Sean is gonna just give you a little recap of the issue. I am looking to Sean, would you prefer it's the three that have the actual conflict go off-screen, Sean, or does it matter?
No, it does not matter if they just cannot participate or discuss. So yeah, being present is fine. So with that, I will, just briefly, as the council earlier tonight passed by resolution, it established workers' compensation benefits for all volunteers except for the city council. And because of the conflict of interest, the council could not do that tonight. However, what this resolution does is establish a policy that in the future, beginning January 1, 2023, council members who are on the council at that point in time will receive a workers' compensation or will be eligible for being covered by the city's workers' compensation insurance beginning at that point in time. Now, what this does is it actually provides a benefit to the city as well in reducing injury risk and reducing potential liability claims for the city. So that's why the city covers all volunteers and except the council in the earlier resolution, extending it to the council provides that same protection to the city. And with that, I don't know if Stacy has anything more to add, but that's all I have.
Questions for Sean or Stacy? Council President Grimes?
Question. So for any additional insurance fees that would be incurred by extending the coverage to the council, is that offset then by a reduction in insurance fees because we're taking down some liability for possible claims? Or is that not really relevant? I'm just trying to figure out like what the impact would be financially by adding the coverage for the council or if it's kind of de minimis?
Stacy, you might be the better person to answer that. We won't know for sure until 2023, just because of the rates are set by SAFE, which is our insurance carrier. So we actually don't know what the impact will be. It will be fairly small impact, but there will be some impact.
Okay.
Yeah, my thought on the process is that it will not drastically impact our workers' compensation rates, but this is more of a best practices type of effort in which we would not have those that are elected actually vote for themselves to receive the workers' compensation. So it's more of a coverage issue rather than a monetary issue.
And so for, do I have it right? So workers' comp is in place for 2021 because it was already there. 2022, city council won't be covered by workers' comp, but then 2023, it will be when a future council votes on it. Correct?
Our workers' compensation is on a fiscal year basis, so technically you have a couple more days of being covered. Correct, from last year's resolution. And then this next workers' comp goes into effect July 1st.
All right. So there is a year gap until the next one.
Correct.
But then after that, and I'm looking at Sean, but I... Because he will correct me if I'm wrong, but after that, you won't have to vote for council coverage ongoing. This will take care of that ongoing for the council, but you will do the annual resolution for all other volunteers, I believe.
Council Brooks?
Can we just go over why there's this change? Because I think that it's important for people to understand that, why we have a gap in coverage for councilors this upcoming year and how things have changed. And I know that, you know, I talked about a potential conflict of interest because it's looked at as a benefit, which I understand, and it's also liability to our city that we don't have ourselves covered this year. And I think it's a really important thing to clarify about why we have this gap.
So Sean, you wanna cover what the court ruling was?
So it was, it was, it's based on Oregon law. There's a conflict of interest law that essentially, as you've declared tonight, you cannot vote to provide yourself a benefit. And there was a specific opinion that was issued, a staff opinion from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission that provided that clear basis as to why. So because of that, it's been recommended by staff for the council to declare that conflict of interest. And then, you know, one of the options presented by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission staff opinion was to establish a policy in the future, and that provides some protection as far as any type of claim going forward and also complies with government ethics laws.
Right. So essentially, this recent opinion said that workers' comp coverage is a benefit and a form of compensation. So since you can't give yourself compensation, you have to handle it this way for into the future.
Thanks for clarifying that change and thanks for helping us move through it.
Any other questions or comments for Sean or Sherilyn? So discussion from those who can comment and vote. All right, so discussion from those who can comment and vote, the four of us.
Well, I'm just gonna.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bridget.
Okay, I just wanna say that, um, kinda like I alluded to, I think it's really important that, um, the liability of the city and doing best practices like we would with any other volunteer carries over to council, not because of a personal benefit for myself, but because of concern for, um, my liability for the city. And, um, I think that, um, a lot of times, uh, people don't recognize that city councilors are volunteers. And, um, and, you know, it's been a practice of the city to cover volunteers, um, to limit liability. And to me, it sounds like a good thing to continue with, and it's unfortunate that we have a gap.
Right. Any other questions or comments? So do I have a, uh, motion to move Resolution 5561-21 to approve it, for the four of us who can vote?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve Resolution number 5561-21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 5561-21, and discussions on those motions? All right, so I'll start, can I remember who can vote here, Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye, also, so Resolution 5561-21 is passed and adopted. All right, so that moves us on to items removed from consent, which we had none. Uh, we had a request from, uh, Council Pratt to discuss fireworks in the city of Walton this year. Uh, so I'll hand it over to, uh, Council Pratt.
Um, hi, I just, um, I think we all have received an email or two and read things in social media very recently about people's concerns about, um, the fire danger this year. In particular, just because of the high temperatures and how, a, after this heat wave, especially how tinder dry everything is in our city. So, um, I just have a real concern, um, about people lighting fireworks off. And my, my real concern is just the fire danger. We have just, you know, we have our beautiful trees and yards and shrubbery and, um, and homes and wooden fences. And I'm, I'm just terribly concerned that, um, lighting off fireworks this year is not a, uh, is potential for fire danger. I understand it's kinda, we're kinda late in the process, so we'd have to have an emergency ordinance to ban them. Um, one thing that could be considered would be, um, I don't know, I don't think there's right now, uh, adding a, a fine to, um, setting off fireworks. The discussion I think to be had is whether this will help reduce this. Um, I know, um, Chief Steele's here, but I'm sure they're pretty, um, spread thin that evening already. But I still think that if this can in any way reduce, um, setting off fireworks and potential fire hazards, that we should consider it right now. So I'd like to hear what others have to say about it.
Others, other comments, Council Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Council Pratt, I appreciate you bringing that up. I too have been concerned, it feels a little, I've been looking around, um, and know that we're in the middle of a historic drought, that we had concerns about water shortages. Um, we still are looking at, um, we have mitigation in place around from the chlorine shortage, but we have water shortages, there's fires being fought in surrounding areas. And we have a record break in heat wave, and we have this, um, holiday coming up. And as much as I wanna return to normal like everybody else, um, I also feel that we've had, um, ice storm. We've had a lot of catastrophe after catastrophe and the horrible, horrible smoke issues that we had last year. And I'm very concerned as well about, um, unintentioned fire starting in our community. Um, I feel like I'm living in a tinderbox and, uh, furnace and a, uh, health ward all at the same time. And, um, I just don't wanna see things get worse from not doing something. So I appreciate you bringing it up, I would be supportive of just banning, like, lighting off fireworks. Yeah.
Council Sacco.
Um, I have, I share the same concerns, um, and I hate to put anybody on the spot, but exactly what would that look like if we did, um, impose an emergency ordinance to ban fireworks? How would that play out? And, um, do we see people following that if we do move forward? Um, I would just love some additional information and feedback on, on how, like, what the next steps would be like and what the broader scope would look like.
So what would happen is we could direct, uh, Sean Brady to, uh, draft an emergency resolution that would prohibit the use of fireworks, uh, this year in the city of Walton. Uh, it wouldn't prohibit the sale, because the tents are already up, and we don't wanna, um, impinge on people's ability to raise funds for their organizations, but it would basically just ban the use of fireworks in the city of Walton, uh, for this year. Uh, Sean could present us some draft language tonight. And, uh, because we're a council rules, if the vote is unanimous to pass a resolution, we could pass it as an emergency resolution tonight. So it would take effect for July 4th or whatever period that's in this resolution. City of Bend just did this, the city of Eugene is doing it, city of Camas is doing it, Reshugle's doing it. Uh, people are super worried about fires. You know, most of the time, the fires are caused not by the legal fireworks, but more likely in Oregon, the illegal fireworks. But, uh, as someone just mentioned, one little spark is all that's needed right now, be it a legal or illegal firework. So most, a lot of the cities in the area are asking folks to pass on lighting fireworks this year, because we don't wanna see fires like we saw, you know, just recently, and as Chief Steele mentioned before, uh, the ones for a couple of years ago, that, that big fire started from a firework, uh, that was jokingly thrown in the woods. Next thing you know, we had a massive fire for months. So that would be the thing we could do tonight is, uh, I think Sean could share a document, uh, we could review it, tweak it, and then if it's unanimous, we can approve it, and it would be going to effect, uh, with, you know, by tomorrow. And then I know, um, in discussion, you know, we heard from Chief Steele earlier about, uh, the, the police efforts on this, and, you know, we have limited resources, so I'd like to ask Chief what he thinks of the idea.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So, yeah, I mean, I can't disagree with anything that's being said here tonight. Uh, obviously, a, a change like this would require us to, you know, immediately kick off an educational campaign to educate our community as best we can, uh, and there's still gonna be members of the community that might not be watching this tonight or following us on social media, so we'll do our best to get that message out there and then make sure our staff are aware of the direction we're going. And again, you know, we're always looking for that voluntary compliance, we gotta educate people, we utilize a lot of warnings when possible. Uh, so that's probably not gonna change on a, uh, you know, a change like this that happens fairly quickly. Uh, you know, our officers make great decisions every day, and, uh, they have a lot of discretion that comes along with their positions. And we're gonna rely on them to make good, good decisions as, as we move forward with a potential enforcement of, of something like this.
Does that answer your, uh, question, Council Sacco?
Are we banning it?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, are we banning this just for this year, or is it forever?
Just this year.
Okay. Well, I wanna be clear that what we're saying here.
Council President Grimes.
Thank you, um, and I do, I understand everybody's concerns, and I know, I'm watching the wind outside right now, and it just makes the hair in back my next den up. You know, my concern though is when we're looking at less than a week in time, which makes an educational campaign, I mean, that really, you know, makes it kinda tough. And then, you know, we're addressing, I mean, obviously, the illegal fireworks that come in from outside of the state or just north of Washington, they're always a problem, and they, you know, they're worn, they're very bad. But I, I just, I'm a little worried about people that have perhaps, you know, they're buying in the city from a legal vendor, legal Oregon fireworks, and, you know, potentially, they may not hear the message and may not find out about the fact that, you know, a ban, potential ban goes into effect. And I just, you know, I worry about the penalty phase of something like that on people that, in good faith, made a legal purchase from a legal vendor and, and, you know, them incurring a fine or some sort of a, you know, something that was done completely and totally with the best of intentions. And, you know, they get the backside of that. So, I mean, I worry about that because this is such an incredible short window. You mentioned some of the other municipalities are thinking about doing this. Are they kind of on the same timeframe as we are, or do they act earlier? They're.
Everyone's, everyone's reacting because of the dra, the extreme temperatures, everything's happened in the last two or three days.
Okay, all right, that was, I was concerned about their window also, thanks.
And that the, the point you're making about, uh, financial implications of being caught doing it and not knowing, I think as Chief mentioned, I think his, his officers would lean towards warning versus writing tickets or citing people. That's what they've done for years, uh, unless, you know, obviously, the police come, give you a warning, and then they have to come back, then they might have a different message the second time or something like that. But I think our police officers do a pretty good job of, you know, warning folks versus writing tickets right away. Uh, Council Pratt, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to address that Council Grimes and, um, was saying, like, I, I looked up the ban, and they're actually charging $750 for lighting off legal fireworks, and I think that's a little out of bounds. But, um, I, I wouldn't want some awful fine on people, I, I just, I just want a message out there to reduce this as much as possible.
Yes, uh, I think I talked to Council President Grimes, then Brooks, and Council Hillier.
Yeah, I just have a question, and I don't know, maybe this is Sean's question, but for the vendors who are selling legal Oregon fireworks and are either doing it as an actual business to make money, or they're doing it as kind of a fundraiser, us banning the use of fireworks in the city, does it make us, I mean, because we're kind of crushing their businesses, it feels like a little bit. I mean, are we putting ourselves in any kind of jeopardy by potentially sort of pulling the rug out from under them after we gave them the business license, or they're making a, a legal sale that's legal in the state? And I don't know, I might be borrowing trouble, but it kinda seems a little dicey, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are.
We can have Sean weigh in, but that's, you know, that's what other cities have done, they specifically don't prohibit the sales for that reason. That people can still buy them, they just can't use them this year. But, um, you know, Sean can always weigh in on this.
Yeah, that's absolutely right, I, as I understand it, you're not considering banning the sale, just, just the use, uh, for that reason. Uh, and you'd be doing it under emergency, essentially an emergency declaration. So because of the heat, because of the dangers that fireworks present related to that heat, um, this is a reasonable, um, emergency action for the, for the council to take. Um, and, and then, uh, even, even if that hurts sales, it's not, it's not something that is, uh, that I would argue is, that a vendor could come after the city against us, because that is done under legal authority by declaration of emergency and by, um, the extreme circumstances that the, that the city is in at the moment.
I think it was Council Sacco, Brooks, and then Hillier, right? Or I got the wrong, wrong order? So is it Council Hillier first and then Brooks?
I think it was me.
All right, I saw all these hands up, and now I see Council, uh, Reyes, so, Council Brooks, go ahead.
I just, I just wanna say, um, to Council Pratt's point as well, as far as the, um, fines and ban. I, when I was on vacation, um, the last month or whatever it was, I had the opportunity to drive through miles and miles and miles of fire damage and, um, understand why communities that see the damage and all the homes that were burnt, day after day after day, um, including fire trucks that are on the side of the road that are burned out completely, how many people's lives were lost. And then I got a chance to hang out in the desert, and it was actually cooler than it is here right now. And then I got to drive back through a fire in the gorge and divert traffic through that fire. So it sometimes feels like these fires are far away, but I've watched all of the, and, and we've used water on like the hydrangea, everything's just shriveled into, uh, dry, um, tinder in my yard. I know, I'm sure I'm not the only yard, and we have a sprinkler system, not everyone uses those, and I appreciate that. So I think that the intention for me, anyway, of looking at this is not to be about the business of, um, doing harm, but to be of the business of being leaders as far as saying this is a dangerous time to be lighting off fireworks. And, um, a ban is a way of saying refraining from that. It's not about trying to penalize people or businesses, but trying to be smart and look at my surroundings and know this seems to be a dangerous time to be in the business of even lighting a match outside, much less of fireworks. So I, um, I would hate to not take leadership and then have some horrible accident or incident and have any loss of property or life to anyone.
Council Reyes?
Yeah, I can see, uh, I've been listening to all the points, and they're all valid. I think that I, um, we have to be, you know, wise in a sense. I mean, um, there, it is hot outside, uh, it is, it's dangerous, and, um, it will cool off a little bit, but I feel like I'm with the rest of, um, with the other councillors that, um, for this year, we should be careful about it because of the, just the heat and, and the situation and what it can cause, potentially can cause if anything goes wrong. Um, but I also feel that, um, if we are gonna go out there and, you know, we have to also, we can't, we can't just, uh, find everybody at one time, I'm, I'm with that as well, that because it's such a short notice, and people have bought already our works, and who was expecting 115 degree weather three, two weeks ago? I mean, no one, no one was, and so, um, so I feel like, yeah, there's gotta be also some kind of warning, um, on some people that might have already purchased fireworks. And, and if they do it, then, you know, kind of let them know, hey, you can't do this, not this year. Um, so I'm in, in favor of that, um, that we, you know, yeah, I mean, on the side of cautious, I mean, it is scary out there, so.
Council Sacco.
Um, so what, what, what timeframe are we looking at? So are we saying no fireworks until the 4th? Are we saying, and I don't know exactly what, um, the verbiage is of letting fireworks off in general, uh, on days that aren't the 4th? Uh, are we saying through the 5th, through the 6th? Um, I guess my fear is that people are just gonna then wait until the bans lifted, or whatever the case may be, that we have all these fireworks. Uh, so it's how we frame the time, the timing, um, and what are people's thoughts around that?
Ben.
Or what are the other cities doing, uh, if you've heard?
July 9th, Ben went to July 9th. Council Hillier, you're up, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Um, I guess I would love to see us in tandem, uh, work with the Parks Department around messaging, because I think all of us have probably. uh, work with the Parks Department around messaging, because I think all of us have probably cleaned up parks and you see cigarette butts that we continue to clean up, though our parks are smoke, tobacco, and vape free. And as we've stated here, you know, a match could light, you know, just even throwing a cigarette out the car window as we saw on the freeway with Enchanted Parkway with good citizens, good Samaritans stopping and putting that fire out. I'd like to see us, um, expand the messaging, um, to ensure that, that all folks in our community are pulling together to keep us all safe through this season.
So, uh, Sean, can you, um, you have a sample resolution that you can share?
I do.
Based on just research of what's happening in Bend and other cities in the area?
Can you see that okay?
Yep.
So I, I don't know if you want me to read this or just want to, uh, want, want me to scroll through it?
I think I should read it for those individuals who are just listening and not looking at a screen like we are, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so the title of this resolution, uh, this is as proposed, and again, the council can change this in any way. Uh, it's a resolution declaring a state of emergency related to extreme heat and the dangers of fireworks and prohibiting the use of fireworks within the city of Tualatin. It has several whereas clauses, whereas the city has been experiencing extreme heat for several days, including multiple days with temperatures above 105 degrees Fahrenheit. Whereas the National Weather Service issued a excessive heat warning for the region, including Tualatin. Whereas the current National Weather Service forecast for Tualatin shows daily high temperatures exceeding 90 degrees Fahrenheit through at least July 4th, 2021. Whereas the extreme heat is contributing to all, to, there should be an "and," and already high fire danger. Whereas according to the National Fire Protection Association, fireworks cause over 19,000 fires and require emergency room treatment for over 9,000 people in the United States each year. Whereas under ORS 401 dot 309, the governing body of a city may declare by resolution that a state of emergency exists within the city, which resolution may establish procedures to prepare for and carry out activities to prevent, minimize, respond to, or recover from an emergency. Whereas under Tualatin Municipal Code, Chapter 1 dash 7, the city has established an emergency operations plan. And whereas under ORS 401 dot 309 and TMC 1 dash 07, a declaration of state of emergency is necessary to protect life and property to minimize damage to life and property and to ensure the city of Tualatin has the appropriate resources to respond to the emergency. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Tualatin, Oregon, that in the first section, Section 1, Declaration of Emergency, a state of emergency for the entire city of Tualatin is immediately in effect or will remain in effect until some date, uh, 2021 or other date, unless sooner terminated or extended by the Tualatin City Council. Section 2, Emergency Conditions, the following emergency conditions have resulted in the need for a state of emergency, A, extreme heat and dry conditions, B, dangerous conditions for the use of fireworks, and C, significant likelihood of fire damage from the use of fireworks. Section 3, Use of Fireworks Prohibited, the use of any and all fireworks as defined by ORS 480 dot 111 within the city of Tualatin during this emergency is strictly prohibited. For purposes of this section, use includes lighting, exploding, or igniting in any way. Fireworks displayed as approved by the Tualatin Valley Fire and Rescue or the Oregon State Fire Marshal are exempt from this restriction. Use of fireworks that are illegal under state law continues to be prohibited at all times. Violations, and this is a section, just so that everyone is aware, TMC 1 dash 7 provides for violations of any emergency orders, so that's what this section is referencing. Pursuant to TMC 1 dash 7 dash 070, any person who violates the measures set forth in this resolution commits a civil infraction and shall be subject to a fine of $500 for each violation and may be prosecuted in municipal court. Section 5, City Manager Authority, the city manager or designee is authorized to take all necessary actions authorized by law to enforce this resolution. City manager or designee is authorized to coordinate response and recovery efforts related to this emergency, including but not limited to requesting assistance from the state of Oregon and Washington, Clackamas Counties. And then the effective date this resolution is effective upon adoption.
Thanks, Sean. So it sounds like, um, where people would have the questions are, is when is it going to affect to? And then questions around the fine, uh, is that, you know, do you have to do the fine or it could be, you know, up to and including or something like that, that gives the officer discretion? So what do folks think? First, uh, first thing I'm going to, if you can, uh, so I can see everybody again, Sean, and we can probably go back to this. The first thing I've got to do is find out, make sure that all, uh, seven of us are supportive of this type of resolution, because it has to be unanimous, so if all seven of us are not in support of some sort of resolution, then we'll just stop talking at this point.
And just, just to clarify, Mayor, so because it's an emergency declaration, it actually only require, it would require a majority of the council.
Okay.
If it was an emergency ordinance, then the council rules would require it to be a unanimous ordinance.
All right. Define details of this stuff, all right. So I, I, based on our discussion, I know there's, there's a, a majority, so we'll keep on talking here. So, uh, I guess let's do the easy one first, the date, uh, as I mentioned before, that what I've been seeing is everyone's going to July 9th. And, uh, I think that, as Council Sacco asked, I remember seeing in Oregon State Law, there's only, in, uh, I think, uh, in Oregon State Law and Tualatin Law, uh, ordinances, there's only certain days and times you can explode fireworks. And it usually ends like, it's only on the 4th, you can't do it on the 5th. Um, so those people who, like, uh, Council Sacco said, hold on to them and try to weigh this out, we could just say to July 9th. Is everybody okay with July 9th? All right, so on the second item, Sean, how could you word it that, um, you know, the officer has discretion that it'd be up to and including a $500 fine, is that how you would say it?
Sorry, I was muted, um, so, I mean, currently, uh, you know, under, so you can set the fine at whatever amount the council wants to set it at. The officers normally don't have the discretion to establish the amount of the fine, it, it's whether or not to fine or not.
Okay.
And then the, the judge has the discretion to reduce that fine, eliminate that fine, or, or settle that.
Right. So, uh, okay, Council Brooks?
I just think if we put May in front of it, maybe subjected to a $500 fine, but I do like where um, Sean was going, if it's a standard with, um, breaking emergency, um, resolution, you know, like having something that protects life and, because if something terrible were to happen, I would want us to be, um, going along with what our standard protocols are for emergencies and it is just a, um, unfortunate set of circumstances all tied together around this particular day.
Other comments? President Grimes?
Yeah, um, I just have a real problem with the fine part, um, I mean, we already have a fine, um, protocol for people that are using illegal fireworks, like non-Oregon fireworks, and I do think that's appropriate because that's been well publicized, it's been well established, I think everybody knows that and agrees in principle or in fact that that is very important. I just have a real problem with, um, the lack of time we have to get the message out and, you know, penalizing people that just, through no fault of their own, just might not have quite gotten the message and think that they're being compliant, so, you know, I would really prefer to see something that does not have a fine if it was purchased as an Oregon legal firework. But, no, I, now I should just say, but for the others, I, I wouldn't want to make a single change in that because that, that's just horrible.
I, I understand what Council Grimes is saying about the fines, but, um, if the police warns somebody, it's saying this situation, we're really relying on the police, if they're, um, they give somebody a warning and these people totally ignore them, if there's not a fine, what is there to stop them? That would be my concern on the other end of that.
Good point, that they get their, they get their warning and then blow it off and the officers come back and they're, you know, you're going to give another warning again?
Well, unfortunately, we, my cul-de-sac in years past, we've been on the receiving end of attention from the police, and believe me, the first time they come around, you don't even want to have a discussion a second time, but, you know, they also are very nice, um, nice about confiscating things also, and so if there's an emergency order in place and they go and, I mean, if they sensed that people weren't, you know, going to want to be very compliant, I mean, they could always confiscate the fireworks and that would kind of solve that problem. I don't want to put the police in a, in a pinch and I don't want to make them be like an on-the-spot enforcer of having to do things, I just have, I just feel badly about.
That's what they do every day.
Yeah.
I don't want to have like the slight and scale of justice and the police having to like make this decision right then and there about, you know, putting a lot of stress on them.
Can I weigh in, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sure, please.
You know, again, you know, that is unfortunately the role of a police officer and they get to face those dilemmas every single day. And, you know, we're not going to be perfect, but again, you know, I rely on our staff to make those decisions every day and they do a pretty darn good job of it. And, and so we, we do need kind of that, that teeth component to it, to have some type of action to fall back on. Uh, but I don't honestly think this is going to be something we're going to be utilizing a significant amount of, this is, I don't want to say symbolic in some ways, but we need the community to understand how severe the hazards are this year and, and we need some help, but we need to kind of have that, this, this is an option to fall back on if need be. Uh, and again, you know, even years up to now, I mean, you all live in this community, we have firework issues, just like every community around us. But we're not, uh, taking a firm enforcement stance on every person we contact fireworks in years past. Our officers are exercising that discretion, they do have that tool available to them to seize it, uh, and then we kind of move on to the next issue, uh, but this does give us one more option if we run out of, you know, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C don't work, this gives us an option to issue a citation if need be.
Council Reyes?
Yeah, I think that we're, we're all seem to be on, kind of like thinking the same way. Um, I do, uh, want to let you know that if this is an emergency, it is going to be, I'm thinking of the people that are, um, don't speak the language and this really has to move forward quickly, I mean, because a lot of them, what if they, if they don't speak English or anything, they have not read this, they don't know anything, there goes a cop and then all of a sudden there's this big issue that may happen from this situation as well, since it's what, four days, five days prior to the weekend, and so I feel like we have to be also, uh, if we're going to communicate, we're going to move forward, we got to do it quickly because it is, a lot of these individuals may have already purchased fireworks and they're getting ready to do something and, you know, have fun with their families and all of a sudden, they're not understanding, there's a cop coming, they have not read the emergency, uh, here's this big issue that may, this little thing that may become a big issue. So let's just kind of, just want to let you know that whatever we do, we got to, uh, make it clear and make sure that everybody uh, knows it in Spanish or any other languages that we're using out there, because it will, it can potentially become a little bit of a, if no one has read that, uh, specific emergency. I mean, I'll try my best, but to, to spread the word, but still, you know, I'm just want to make sure that we're careful with all this.
Council Hillier?
Um, I think that is also, um, a concern I have, and I think it's an opportunity, we have such great partners, um, the Police Department, but the School District, and so, I mean, we could put it out, even potentially flyers at the, um, lunch buses and, and a variety of different things to different parts of our community that, that I'm not going to even try to dictate, but we have tons of, um, community partners and I think this is a great opportunity for us to consider, um, talking with them about this communication plan.
Yeah, I mean, I know the city has the ability to text this out too, the, you know, they can send out a emergency text to those folks. Uh, I've gotten texts in the past where we've announced stuff for the city, so we can use that. We've got the Fa- Facebook, Instagram, Megan's a master of this, so I think we can get the message out fairly quickly. And again, if someone doesn't realize it, officer shows up, they explain the situation, officer warns them and, you know, it's, it's over. They, you know, the officer moves on, so. Council Brooks?
I was going to say one last thing, even with a fine, um, if someone's roof catches on fire, that's going to cost not more than $500, um, it's a lot more distressing to go to a site where someone's been a burn, burn victim, um, for police officers, and I think that safety, I think the nature, I just want to commend, um, Sean on the nature of the resolution, because it really is about protecting people and property from a situation that we're in right now that's hazardous, and I really appreciate the work, thanks.
Council Reyes?
Yeah, I, I, I'm a little concerned because I, I just tell you, um, our job is to protect also our, um, the city and our resources and the people that are out there for us, um, protecting the city, but you know, a lot of times we, on the fine thing, and I'm going to go back on that a little bit, I just think of people, okay, they might get a fine and then all of a sudden they have to go to court to pay it, or may might not have the money to pay it, and then, you know, nothing happened and, you know, we're getting a fire or that, and then all of a sudden they're afraid to go to court, they're afraid to pay the fine, they're, it's just, I just, there's a lot of things that can spark out of this besides fire, so I want to also make sure that officers are not in a situation where they're going to be, um, on the news or anything, or something that could, could, I don't know, easily be, uh, I don't know, the fine is a little bit on the, we should have a fine, but also I don't know how much that would, that would be of a, you know what I mean, that we're not leaving someone without bread and milk and food, you know, on the table, I don't know. So, or a roof over their head, I don't know, I just, you, just just be very careful on how we're, we're going to put a fine and how much that's going to look like, because for in my experience of people that get, what I've seen in the past is the people that get, uh, affected by a lot of this stuff are people that are not, um, don't have the means because they didn't somehow the communication did not get through them, so.
I've seen some, I've seen some cities that, um, the lowest I've seen is 250 as far as the fine, so, you know, 500, 250, um, but like, Chief is saying, you got to have the carrot and the stick, the carrot is the warning, the stick is, you know, the fine, Chief?
Yeah, just one other quick thing, you know, so the, the last week we've been suffering through this heat, uh, there's a lot of people in our community that don't have air conditioning, so they got their windows open, and we've been responding to a lot of noise complaints, uh, a lot of noise complaints. And we have a, a, an ordinance in the city, very much like what we're looking at doing, that has a fine that goes along with it for violating the noise ordinance. We have not issued any citations for the violations of noise ordinance, even though there's technically a lot of violations going on. Again, our officers are using that discretion, but they have that tool re- there if they were to need it, but we're not using that at all, we're, we're educating people what's going on, we're working with people to solve those issues and that solves about 99.9% of our issues.
So, uh, where are we at this? So, looking at Sean saying, we, we agreed on July 9th, uh, it sounds like, uh, most of us are happy with the fine, knowing that the police will probably more likely use, uh, warnings rather than fines, and fine would be the extreme if they ever had to use that. Uh, what do people think? Because as Council Reyes says, we want to get this done tonight, because we also have a Development Commission meeting after this. So what's the, what's the pleasure here?
I, I like how it's written with the date of July 9th and I, I like how it's written with the date of July 9th and I don't know if I make a motion to pass an emergency resolution banning fireworks in, uh, Twelton.
Thank you.
And I also wanna say that I appreciate Chief Steele's, um, uh, leadership and understanding of how our police force is planning on utilizing this. It sounds like just would be people that would be really adamantly, um, uh, break, you know, just, just being very, um, oppositional is how we would say it in, uh, therapy world. Thanks.
So Sean, on Council Brooks's motion, where you know that you needed it and we don't have to be that nitpicky, do we?
Well, I, I, I changed it, uh, as we were speaking, what I noticed. Um, and, and just so you know, thank you to Nicole. She gave me a resolution number. Uh, if you are so interested, it's 5562-21.
So Council Brooks, you wanna restate your motion?
Yes, I think I got it right. Um, I move to adopt, um, Resolution 55622-1.
5562-21.
Okay.
And it has everything the same except the July, the insertion of the July 9th date.
Okay, um, amend it to 5562-21.
Second?
A motion, a second to adopt Resolution Number 5562-21. The emergency resolution, uh, banning the use of fireworks in the city of Twelton just for this year. Any discussions on the motion? Uh, Councilor Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
What, it's a fine? I'm sorry, I, when it, when you said discuss.
We left it at $500.
$100? Which, can we reconsider the fine amount?
We'd have to amend the motion to second.
Um, sure, yes.
All right, Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council President Grimes?
With great input from Chief Steele, aye. Thank you.
And the Chair votes aye also. It's unanimous. Uh, the emergency resolution takes effect for July 4th, uh, for fireworks in the city of Twelton. Thank you all. Uh, with that, uh, any council communications? Council Pratt?
Really quick, I just wanna thank, um, Sean and city staff for helping move this forward and make sure it's commu-, you know, it's communicated to the, everybody affected as much as possible.
Council Hillier?
And I'd like to say if there's anything that we can do as councilors to help get the word out, please let us know. We're, we're here to serve.
Any other council communications? All right, so I'll go ahead and adjourn the City Council meeting. Uh, we close this PDF and then we have to switch our hats and become Development Commissioners now. So we'll go ahead, I'll call into, to call to order the June 28th, 2021, City of Twelton Development Commission meeting. Um, first item on our agenda is public comment. Uh, public comment is an opportunity to, for anyone to address the commission regarding items that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone here would like to, to address the commission, this will be the appropriate time. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is our items that are considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion. Um, by the commission, uh, if anybody in the commission would like this item, we only have one removed from consent. Please let me know now. All right, the consent agenda tonight consists of one item, consideration of approval. The Twelton Development Commission meeting, minutes of April 26th, 2021. Have a motion to adopt.
I'm, I'm moved that we adopt the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion, second to approve the consent agenda as read. Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Sorry, Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Uh, all right, Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. All right, moving into public hearings. Uh, item number one, consideration of Resolution Number Fi- uh, 629. I'm so used to all the fives before. Resolution Number 629-21. Adopting the Twelton Development Commission budget and making appropriation appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021. At least there's not that ad valorem in this one.
I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, I may, tried to make this one easier for you. I quickly made that change after the last, uh, resolution you had read, just for you. Uh, anyway, I am Don Hudson. I'm still your Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. What you have in front of you is Resolution 629-21, 21, 2022 fiscal year. Uh, we suggest, or we recommend you adopt the attached resolution, which is the budget, the City of Twelton Budget Committee's approved budget from, uh, March or May 25th, 2021. There, we have no changes that we are recommending this evening. So a total budget for the Twelton Development Commission, a $4,082,820, divided up by the Twelton Development Commission Administration Fund of $691,010 and the Twel-, or the, uh, Leaverton Tax Increment District Projects Fund of $3,391,810. Uh, this will allow the commission to operate starting on Thursday, July 1st. At that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Don? All right, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 629-21, adopting the TDC budget, making appropriations for fiscal year commencing Thursday.
Can I interrupt? I apologize. I think.
Yeah, I did it again, didn't I, Sean? Jeez, it is a public hearing. Thank you. So for those folks who are still with us on the Zoom call or Zoom meeting, do I have any, uh, uh, public testimony either in favor or against this resolution adopting the TDC's budget for fiscal year 21, 22? All right. Seeing none, I'll move on now to asking, uh, for a motion.
I'll try again. Um, I'll make a motion to, to approve Resolution 629-21, adopting the TDC budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021.
I second.
I don't know who was first in the chute there. Uh, I have a second to, uh, adopt Resolution 629-21. Any discussion on the motions? Uh, Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt? Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. The resolution is adopted and the budget approved. That moves us on to general, thank you, Don. Uh, moves us on to general business. Item number one, consideration of Resolution Number 627-21. The Twelton Development Commission commencing the formal public review process for the Herman Road substantial amendment. And see Jonathan, and there we disappear. So I guess Jonathan's leading, I presume?
Actually, uh.
Or is it Elaine?
Elaine will be leading this one.
All right.
But, uh, on behalf of staff and our consultant Elaine Howard, we are pleased to present the Leaverton substantial amendment, which has been a multi-year process, but I'm gonna give it over to Elaine.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, this presentation, I think, is tied to the district, uh, the, the next item. Oh no, Leaverton, okay. Um, the role of the Urban Renewal Agency and the Leaverton Amendment is, uh, what we will talk about first. Um, we will also go through the preparation update of boundary projects finances, a briefing to Washington County, impact on taxing districts, and the next steps. This shows the existing Leaverton Tax Increment District with the expansion. The expansion is simply adding the right-of-way to be able to do the Herman Road project. However, because you have already added 1% of acreage, it becomes a substantial amendment by statute. And both that and the fact that your project cost exceeds certain thresholds in the pant plan require that you pursue this under the substantial amendment provisions. So you can see on the far right that the added section is 7.88 acres and is the proposed right-of-way for the Herman Road Extension Project. Jonathan?
So the proposed project, um, which obviously better, more qualified people can explain that at a later date. This is a Herman Road design conceptual plan. So as, as you see here, this is just the actual proposed concept plan that has been provided by the Community Development Department and Mike McCarthy. Um, there currently in your staff report, and I'm gonna pull that up, you can still see that. But in the staff report, they wanted me to include that currently the project update is that the design team has surveyed existing topographic conditions and surveyed residents and businesses, as well as forming a citywide project charter team. Uh, the conceptual design options were developed based on a community and charter team input, transportation needs and the available space for the roadway and sidewalk. Uh, as well as the design team held a virtual open house to listen to the community perspective on these designs and they identified a recommended design and it confirmed with the charter team. According to the Community Development Department, the next step is to advance the recommended conceptual design to engineering preliminary plans, including coordinating that design with environmental agencies on the railroad, working towards final design and the eventual construction, as well as the integral part between the Twelton Development Commission and the City of Twelton. An intergovernmental agreement between the Twelton Development Commission and the city will be provided at a later date for consideration involved 2021 for, uh, the staffing services as well as the financial models through the financing department.
Next one? So before we talk about next steps, uh, this district is no longer taking division of tax revenues. That was ceased a number of years ago. Even though we aren't, you aren't taking division of tax revenues, you have to follow the requirements in the statute that says you have to brief and consult and confer with the different taxing districts. That would be the next step if this amendment passes tonight, which would be, uh, mailing a letter to them tomorrow that tells them you are hoping to undertake this project and this is the remaining project within this area. Um, and it is specifically for the Herman Road Extension. You are also required to brief Washington County. They are not, uh, required to take any action on this, but a briefing is required by statute. That's scheduled for August 3rd. There will be a public online open house, some information put, uh, online in July, so coming up soon. The Planning Commission will review the project for its conformance to the comprehensive plan on July 15th. The City Council will hold a hearing that is advertised citywide on August 9th and they'll vote on the ordinance August 23rd. It has to be a non-emergency ordinance, so it does not go into effect until 30 days afterwards. We do not expect any, um, opposition from any of the taxing jurisdictions because it is simply using up funds that are already existing and has, uh, absolutely no impact on them. So what you are reviewing tonight is the approval of that project and the approval of putting that, uh, Herman Road right-of-way into that urban renewal area. And this would be a time for questions or discussion.
Thanks Elaine. Questions for Elaine or Jonathan? Commissioner Pratt?
I don't have any, um, questions. I just wanna, um, I'm just really excited about this project and having, um, giving safer access to our businesses, both, you know, vehicles, pedestrians, and bikes. This is something a long time needed and I know somebody was pretty creative in getting this added, probably Jonathan, and I really appreciate it.
Other comments or questions? All right, I, I echo Commissioner Pratt's comments that I wonder why it took us so long to figure this out, to use this and, you know, make those improvements to Herman Road that's been sitting there forever since I've lived in Twelton. Uh, and now get those things fixed. Uh, so this is terrific use of urban real money to make that a safer road, especially for bikes and pets. Cause I've heard stories from Jeff Fox of when he was biking down that road, sometimes almost getting clipped by that little stretch of Herman Road, so. Thank you, Jonathan, for, you know, uh, thinking outside the box and making that happen.
I'm not gonna take all the, I'm not, this was, this was a collaborative effort, so, uh, it, and it, if it wasn't for Tim trying to help me understand the project design and convey that, yeah, and then obviously Cheryl and Don helping me out with the legalese of it, so.
Thank you all, all for it. Thank you very much, cause it, like we all know, it's very much needed and is, uh, gonna make Herman Road a much better, uh, through fare for folks who use it. Any other questions or comments for Jonathan or Elaine on this subject? So I have a motion on this resolution?
Do you have to have public comment first?
No, this is general business. I'm not messing this one up.
All right, I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 627-21 of the Twelton Development Commission commencing the formal public review process for the Herman Road substantial amendment.
I will second that.
I have a motion, a second to adopt Resolution 627-21. Any discussions on those motions? Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
I vote aye. It's, uh, it's unanimous, Resolution Number 627-21. All right, moving on, second item of business, consideration of Resolution Number 628-21 of the Twelton Development Commission commencing the formal review process of the Southwest and Pasol Creek Development Area Plan. I assume this is, first the same two folks, Elaine and Jonathan.
So Jonathan, is this mine too?
This one, yeah, and this was, uh, this one's a more detailed power.
It is. So this one is more detailed than the process, uh, although the same does have impacts on taxing districts. So it, it, um, will have different, um, different consequences, maybe. Different sequences will happen from it. So the role of the agency tonight is to send, consider sending the draft Southwest and Pasol Creek Area Plan and report out for formal public review, including sending it to your planning commission, um, doing your consult and confer time period with the taxing districts. That's a required 45-day time period. Washington County will need to take action on this particular, uh, plan adoption because there are unincorporated properties within the area boundary. Um, there is required public input, um, and a citywide notice that will notice for the hearing, which the City Council is projected to do on August 3rd and then consideration of adoption of the ordinance. So we will go through some of this in more detail. Jonathan? Thank you. We did have an advisory. We did have an advisory committee review and give input on this. We had three separate meetings of the advisory committee. We reviewed the boundary. On the boundary review, we did change the boundary as the, at the request of one of the advisory committee members to add the parcel that will provide affordable housing within the area. We reviewed projects. We did have input from one of the committee members to add additional projects. I think we might go over that later as we talk about the project section. We reviewed those projects and the committee decided to stick with the projects as recommended by staff. And we went over the financial components of the proposed urban renewal plan, including the inputs to the taxing districts. That advisory committee was comprised of Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue, so one of our key taxing district partners. It also had one of your city councilors on the committee, one of your planning commission members, a resident representative of Portland General Electric. Jonathan, who have I missed?
On the committee.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we had Portland General Electric, we had CPO, which is the Affordable Housing. We had a property owner, we had a representative from the Planning Commission, and Counselor Sacco from Tuolton.
Yeah, okay. So the public review process does include the agency meeting. So this is a televised meeting and recorded. If anybody wants to review it, I'm sure they can. There is the Planning Commission meeting, the City Council meeting, and then there will be general public information posted to the website. Next slide please. This is the proposed boundary of the area. It includes both the southwest industrial area and the Basalt Creek Concept Plan area. It is a total of approximately 717 acres. It is connected, the connection is a cherry stem to the far left of, or west of the map that you see here that connects the two areas that allows this to be an urban renewal area considered as one. We have had legal counsel review in the past that says all urban renewal areas must be physically connected in some way. And so we made that physical connection, and cherry stems are a perfectly acceptable way to do that. They have never been challenged as a way to connect two separate areas. Next slide. These are the proposed projects for the urban renewal area. They are, the majority of them are utility projects. So the Tonkon Loop Sewer Project, they are shown both in constant dollars. So what the projection for their cost is today and then year of expenditure dollars. So as this is a 30-year urban renewal area, the cost of these projects go up annually due to inflation. We've included a 3% inflation factor in the plan. So that year of expenditure project cost is the estimated cost at the time that this will actually occur in the future. So we have the Tonkon Loop Sewer, we have the Basalt Creek Gravity Sewer, the Southwest Tuolton Gravity Sewer, the 124th Future Lake Street Signal, Tonkon Trail, property mitigation, the Blake Street Extension, some small business grants for existing businesses within the area. The highest cost project is a water system upsizing for the area. And then financing fees for undertaking debt in the future, placing those bonds to be able to finance your urban renewal area and then administrative costs over the timeframe of the area. Next slide. There are limitations for acreage and assessed value within cities. And for a city your size, you may have up to 25% of your total acreage and up to 25% of your total assessed value within an urban renewal area. The acreage here proposed is 13.68%, and the assessed value is very small at this 1.9%. So that leaves you a lot of capacity for the other urban renewal potential area that you discussed earlier this evening. Next slide, thank you. The maximum indebtedness was calculated, there shouldn't be a re on that, but was calculated using a 6% growth scenario. We reviewed that growth scenario with your finance director for the city, understanding that there is a lot of property within the area that is undeveloped. So there is huge upside potential within the area. The proposed maximum indebtedness is $53,200,000. Maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money that you will have to be able to spend on projects and programs over that 30-year life of the area. Next slide. This just shows the anticipated funding over the lifespan of the area. As we know, and as we briefed you in the last couple of years, urban renewal areas start out slowly. So the initial years, 1 through 5, there is an estimated $600,000 of funds from this area. And then those funds increase in your 6 through 10 and as you go forward. So the maximum indebtedness, although it is $53,200,000, the total amount of proceeds that are anticipated to be taken through division of taxes is around $60,700,000. The reason that is higher is because that includes potential interest on debt, and that is not calculated in the maximum indebtedness figure. The capacity in projects in today's dollars is approximately $29 million. And that is what that project list that we reviewed earlier adds up to is approximately $29 million. Next slide. Again, we have to have county approval of the plan due to unincorporated properties. And Jonathan, you can probably help me point out or describe where those properties are. And it is anticipated before any development actually occurs that those properties would be annexed. But they, they aren't being annexed now as you are doing the urban renewal plan. Go ahead Jonathan. Back to this, yeah, and showing us Jonathan where unincorporated properties are.
Can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Yep, so these are the unincorporated properties. Very far.
Okay, next slide. So in this urban renewal area as proposed, there would be impacts on taxing districts. Urban renewal areas are not providing impacts on property taxpayers. So your citizens who own property do not see an increase in their property taxes due to urban renewal. Those impacts are on the impacted taxing districts. Next slide Jonathan. Those are over a 30-year timeframe, and we have prepared this information for both the general government taxing jurisdictions, which are on the slide here, for each year, for the total of 30 years. Next slide. These show the impacts to both Tuolton, Tiger Tuolton School District and the Sherwood School District. Both of those school districts have impacts. The Education Service District and Portland Community College also have impacts. As we remember, for the school districts and the education service districts, that impact is indirect. They, their budget does not directly decrease due to urban renewal. The impact is on the state school fund, and the state school fund is made up of other sources, including property tax revenues. The state legislature establishes a per pupil funding ratio, modified by individual district characteristics. That per pupil funding ratio does not go down directly as a result of urban renewal, either in your city or any other city within the state. Next slide. The next steps in this process is mailing taxing district letters again tomorrow, briefing Washington County on August 3rd. They like a briefing before they take their action. Public input will be a July online open house. The Tuolton Planning Commission, July 15th. The Washington County will consider their vote on the plan due to unincorporated properties by resolution on August 17th. There is a Tuolton City Council hearing August 9th, I said the wrong date earlier, and the vote on the ordinance on August 23rd. Again, you have prepared a resolution on this one Jonathan, not just a motion?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a prepared resolution.
Okay.
Appropriate attachment.
Okay. So, that is my input. And if you have any questions, let me know. And Jonathan, I don't know if you want to add anything about other input you've received?
So in your staff report, in addition to the staff proposed projects, we have highlighted two citizen proposed projects that have come across from citizen involvement, or citizens, excuse me, the Urban Renewal Task Force. One of the projects was the stormwater management plan, and the other one was the Goal 5 inventory. In your staff report, you will see the reasonings behind why staff did not include the proposed projects. One, the stormwater management plan has been allocated funding from the City Council, not the Tuolton Development Commission commenced in 2021, under the purview of the Community Development Department. As for the Goal 5 inventory, we, Elaine and I, related to the task force member that this is an appropriate use of TIF dollars. However, the direction must be given by the City Council and cannot be assumed by the Tuolton Development Commission because this is a land use action and the Tuolton Development Commission cannot supersede the City Council. But if the City Council wishes to direct that kind of funding to the Tuolton Development Commission, they may be so. We just felt it was important to include it in the staff.
Jonathan, because I'm really tired, could you give us a quick overview of Goal 5?
Is, oh, Steve's not on here, but Goal 5 is a natural.
He is, Steve is on.
I'm here. Thank you Counselor Pratt. I do have a quick kind of PowerPoint that gives you an overview of, you know, it's getting kind of late, but if it pleases the council, I'll introduce that.
You got it. Steve, do you want me to pull it up?
Yeah, if you can pull it up. Sorry, I'm on, I'm on my other computer.
And as Sherilyn pulls that up, we'll just keep saying that the projects that we've presented to you tonight have been directly sourced from prior work the city has done over the last 10 years, from the Southwest Industrial Concept Plan to the most recent Basalt Creek Area Concept Plan. So these are projects that have been previously identified through past public input, but.
Oh, we're waiting Jonathan on that. The one proposed project on the, I think it was the stormwater that you said was allocated to 2021, does that mean that it's in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year?
For the city, for the City of Tuolton, yes ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Sherilyn. So just in, in talking about Goal 5 specifically, I thought it might be helpful just to provide a little refresher recap of what the statewide planning goals are and do. It's, it gets a little bit detailed, and so I'm going to try to keep it hopefully high level and then answer any questions after I go through a couple of these slides. The long and the short of it is that there's currently 19 statewide planning goals. They came out of the Oregon Statewide Planning Land Use Program that kicked off in 1973 and then was further solidified with the adoption of the goals in 1974. The goals are policy statements on land use, citizen involvement, housing, natural resources, and so forth. Next slide please. And so what the statewide planning goals do is they provide policy direction. And so they're implemented through a variety of other regulatory frameworks. And so there are specifically Oregon administrative rules that detail how cities and counties in Oregon are intended to comply with the goals. And then for cities like Tuolton, who are in the metro urban growth boundary, the metro functional plan adds a layer of additional rules or in some place supersedes some of the Oregon administrative rules in how cities comply. And so a couple of examples of where the metro rules supersede are in Goal 10 for housing and then Goal 5, which pertains to natural and other significant resources. And so then the last pieces of the puzzle are that those first three ingredients go into the city's locally adopted comprehensive plan, which needs to comply with all three of those for Tuolton because we're in the metro. And then our development code has to be consistent with the policies and goals that we adopt locally in our comprehensive plan. Next slide please. And so specifically getting to the heart of the matter, what is Goal 5? This summary on the screen is just a short blurb from the actual goal itself, protect natural resources and conserve scenic and historic areas and open spaces. And I think you'll probably agree that this is really one of the central components of Oregon statewide land use planning program and is in general made Oregon a great place to live. There are some other additional comments that are just about basically policy guidance on how this is supposed to happen, again at a fairly high level, but just gives a flavor of kind of what, a little bit more about what Goal 5 is about. Next slide please. And so the big question is how do, how is Goal 5 met? How do cities meet Goal 5? And so under those administrative rules, which are the second layer under the goals, there are kind of two processes. There's actually a couple more. But there's the default process, which cities and counties, particularly those outside of the metro areas, still follow, is to inventory Goal 5 resources and then adopt a list of significant natural resource sites. And so that would be either in your comprehensive plan or development code. And then there's also a process, which is known as the metro process. And so basically, at the end, at the last time Goal 5 and the administrative rules around it were adopted in 1996, on the horizon was a plan by Metro to adopt its own local set of metro rules applicable to cities and counties in the metro UGV that were essentially different than this kind of older way of going through a Goal 5 inventory and doing significant natural resources sites. Some kind of background reasons for why this was so is primarily because of the fact that, you know, cities are much more complex, parcelized, urbanized, and it's very hard to do, hard and expensive to do a significant natural resources inventory. You need to get property owner consent. There's a whole bunch of other kind of factors that make natural resource inventories hard. And so essentially another mouse, another better mousetrap was invented. Next slide please. And so what happened following that, that metro process kind of rule in the Oregon administrative rules is that Metro adopted a title to its functional plan called Title III. Also, just right around the same time that the Oregon administrative rule was last updated in 1996. And it, it gets pretty detailed, but just kind of the high level, long and short of it is that this terminology called water quality resource areas came out of it. And so basically what they are is they're creeks and streams in the metro region, rivers too. too, although some of the rivers have their own rules, so we'll just limit it to creeks and streams for the most part. And then there's a vegetated corridor, which is a buffer next to the actual body of water itself that is protected from development. And so there's, there's kind of in, Metro has their own model code, which they encourage cities and counties to follow, that provides a formula for how the extent of the vegetated corridor is calculated. But suffice it to say, it generally varies between 25 and 100 feet for small streams, 25, and then for larger streams up to 100 feet. And then later on, there is kind of a sense that Metro wanted to do more to address natural resource protection and preservation. And so there is, it was a multi-year effort, but it ultimately culminated in 2005 with the adoption of Title 13. It was called Nature and Neighborhood. Some of you may have heard of it, some of you may have not. And what it did was it created what are known as habitat conservation areas. And so in many cases, they were simply concurrent with the vegetative corridors. Sometimes they were slightly more expansive and it varied. In kind of both of these areas, development is generally prohibited. There's obviously exceptions for certain water dependent uses, things like roads and utilities and other things. And then there's also, of course, schemes under which development is allowed in exchange for mitigation. And so mitigation generally means if you kind of impact an area of these protected areas, then what you would have to do is you have to do enhancements to the riparian areas. This is something that Clean Water Services does a great deal in our community and the other communities that are within Clean Water Services District is basically plantings that enhance, and you've seen this all with your, with the storm water presentation, that it's plantings that stabilize stream banks, you know, mitigate for erosion and all of those other kind of good things. And so there's, there's a lot of great things going on with that. Next slide, please. And so then the last piece of the puzzle is how does Tuolton comply with Goal Five and then the administrative role and then Metro titles? And so prior to Metro Title III and 13, and you see this in our development code, we have a significant natural resources chapter. And there was in 1995, so just prior to the change in kind of philosophical approach to natural resource preservation, there was actually an inventory done in Tuolton. And so you can find a list of sites that are included in that inventory and resources that are protected. And so then post Title 1396, 1996 and on, Clean Water Services has design and construction standards. And so Chapter Three of those design and construction standards, which applied to Tuolton, so because we're a member of the CWS jurisdiction, we essentially, we have to, we have to let them use these regulations in development that we see. And so they provide standards that apply to sensitive areas and vegetative corridors that protect them with, protect them from development and comply with Title III. And so like I mentioned, it's that, it's a very similar, if you go into their construction standards, it's a very similar regime to the Metro's model code, which has a set of, a set of calculations based on the slope of the adjacent bank that determine how large the vegetative corridor. And so specifically here in Tuolton, and I think all, for all jurisdictions as well, development activity, and that's really anything big or small, you know, building permit, whatever other kind of land use action that there is, must submit a pre-screen to Clean Water Services to determine just even are there, is there the potential of sensitive areas before anything even kicks off? And then on our behalf, we include that as a requirement for all of our land use applications, that applicants submit verification from Clean Water Services that that, that this process has been completed. And then lastly, post Title 13, what happened instead of City, instead of Tuolton and some of the other cities in Clean Water Services jurisdiction, instead of adopting Title 13 regulations directly, they all joined together. It's about eight jurisdictions, Washington County, Clean Water Services, joined together to form what's known as the Tuolton Basin Plan. And so what that plan did was it used Clean Water Services existing Title 13 protection standards because they were thought to be so comprehensive that they effectively were similar to the combination of Metro's Title III and 13 standards. And then additionally, Clean Water Services committed to expansion of a capital program to support restoration and volunteer activities. And so you've probably seen or heard of that going on here in Tuolton and, like I said, in some of the other communities for Clean Water Services. And so it's, it's a very complex topic and I've hopefully kept it at a high enough level and broken it down into the component pieces. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions from the commissioners or the chair.
Questions for Steve?
I feel like we keep.
Goal Five and six slides.
Yeah, well, we keep getting questions about compliance with Goal Five. And so for me, it was important to, I guess, have Steve kind of give us something of a rundown and hopefully that addresses and answers some questions that we keep getting.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Brooks?
Thanks for the presentation. I think, you know, it's really important to understand because it is complicated. And I will say that I understand community concerns because at my last water consortium meeting, we talked about five local rivers that are in distress right now, the lowest, two at the lowest levels historically they've ever been. So understanding, are we doing a good job protecting? And especially when we're making decisions during a time of this kind of heat and global warming, where we're doing things that are not carbon sequestration by doing all this development, how are we mitigating? At the same time, we have this, you know, terrible situation with homeless people and with need for the community. So how do we balance these things? And so the community concerns, especially with water out there, with sloping and with, and with the wide open spaces that so many Oregonians have wanted to preserve. And it's good to understand how it goes. I guess my question too with the, you know, like Clean Water Services for doing the planting and, and sort of repairing areas, are we doing things proactively so that we don't have to repair, so that we do things in a way that is proactive and, you know, and are we thinking along those lines when we look at what we're doing out here in this, in this new area of development?
Maybe Kim, did you want to chime in there?
Well, just the, trying to do it proactively, I'm not sure, Commissioner Brooks, what you're, you're meaning by that, but we have to work with them and we are working with them before they come in with our application. So that's where we can be proactive and encourage, like the preservation of trees along Norwood and the larger water quality facilities that will do a much, much better job than a bunch of small facilities within that big 400 lot subdivision. So in that instance, we're being proactive and helping them, steer them towards design like we did on the PGE site, where it doesn't have the, you know, fences and things and the plantings are good, good quality plantings that still meet the requirements of Clean Water Services.
I think also just.
Yeah, that's exactly what I mean. And, you know, we go in and replant because things have, you know, they're not. So I think that, thank you very much. Go ahead, Steve. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to tack on that Clean Water Services does work with landowners in, proactively in vegetative, invasive vegetation clearing and planting. And so obviously, I mean, I think one of the big factors is that, you know, private property owners control a lot of these areas. And so there's certainly limited opportunities in some cases, but I mean, my experience has been that they're really good about, about being proactive and working with those landowners.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for the Goal Five review. So switch back to Jonathan and Elaine. So Jonathan showed us the two things that were suggested by the public or not included in the report. What else do you have as part of your presentation, Jonathan and Elaine? Go ahead, Elaine.
I, when we're on the project page, I meant to say that the projects in an urban renewal plan when adopted are those projects that you can undertake. However, urban renewal plans go for 30 years. So there will be changes over the life of the urban renewal area where you may want to change projects or a project may get funding from a different source, so it's not needed to be funded through urban renewal anymore. Or you may have additional money left over from one project that you can do to another project. So it's just to understand that these are the projects that have been proposed at this point in time. But if new projects come up or projects need to change, you may do that through a minor amendment to your plan, which is just a resolution by the Tuolton Development Commission. So it's easy to do. So I wanted to make sure people understood that. And then there's also a financing plan and the report that accompanies the plan. That financing plan can also be changed annually as you do your budgeting process. So if a grant opportunity comes up for a specific project and you need to leverage your grant application with suggesting funding that you might have, you're able to change the timing on when those projects might occur.
All right. So we're, is that it for your presentation, Elaine and Jonathan? All right. So questions for Elaine or Jonathan on this resolution? Council Pratt?
I just wanted to mention that we're down to 82 degrees, by the way. My question is on the, there was $19.9 million in there for parks funding. And I just kind of want an explanation of that. And besides really liking having a beautiful ballpark, park there, big area, my real concern is that when the non-residential SDCs were passed, there was a lot of discussion about making sure there were areas available for businesses for their employees to go, you know, like picnic areas, small parks, I guess, areas for them to go or walk. And I want to make sure that those SDC funds are going there, but before that can happen, there has to be some mechanism to buy land. So I kind of guess I'm asking a couple of questions combined there, so I hope you can answer them.
So I think Elaine and I would tag team this particular question. So I think the project that you're referencing was the Basalt Creek Park that we originally identified in Parks and Rec Master Plan for $19.9 million. So that project was included with the Urban Renewal Task Force. And there was a good discussion had about, one, why was that included from staff to begin with? And it was an identified need based on council's priorities of expanding natural recreation resources. Through the conversation and really what is appropriate of urban renewal financing and also input from those affected taxing districts, the project was removed at this time. And Elaine, if you would explain to our commissioners why parks and public facilities aren't really supported by other entities?
Okay. So, so a couple, I'm going to hit that too, but a couple of other things to consider is the original list that Jonathan brought to the task force was a list of all deficiencies that was provided by your city staff. So that parks was part of that. We didn't have enough money to fund all of those. We only had enough money, you know, the $29 million or so in present value. So given the input of the committee, we cut down that list to equal that 29 million, knowing that there were other resources available for some of those recreation deeds for, so for the park. The fire districts and other special districts have been very active in Oregon over the last, maybe even 20 years. But in, in 2019, they were very active in trying to change the types of projects that urban renewal undertakes to make sure that they are projects that increase the assessed value within an urban renewal area. And although we have had plans and particularly in this plan, you do still have a Tonkin Trail project of about $2.3 million. They strongly prefer that in your urban renewal funding, that you use the majority of your funds for those transportation or utility infrastructure projects that will help promote new assessed value to occur so that, they forego a lot of money so that at the end of the urban renewal time period, they actually do see growth from that, those projects that are undertaken and they do get more money than they would have if urban renewal didn't exist. So given the fact that you do have other funding resources for that one particular part, we, through our discussion, remove that from the list for urban renewal to fund.
And Ross can't, couldn't be present with us for this discussion, but we will be back on the end of July to talk about the Basalt Creek Park planning process. And he is very aware of and is actively thinking about how to pursue funding for the park. So just because it's not in the urban renewal plan, doesn't mean it's off the table.
Can I answer your question, Commissioner Pratt?
Yeah, I don't necessarily like it, but yes, thank you.
Other questions for Elaine or Jonathan? So I'm just going to follow up on that. So, you know, we're not saying that parks will not be built in the Basalt Creek area just a matter of the dollars from the urban renewal zone will not be used to pay for it, that be used, you know, paid for, you know, grants, SDCs, all stuff we normally, you know, do. It's just specifically urban renewal dollars won't be used to be paid, will not be used to pay for these parks. But we do anticipate, you know, in our, our discussion in the July, that we know that the developers would set aside some acreage over where the residential area will be for parks. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Pratt, we made a commitment to the business community that if we're collecting SDC fees for commercial development, that we would put some sort of trails or pocket parks or the shelters or something in that area. But urban renewal dollars won't be used to do that. SDCs, grants, all the other, you know, funding mechanisms will be used to pay for it. Other questions, comments? People starting to look like zombies here. All right, so I'm not seeing any more questions or comments, so how do people feel about the resolution? Do, am I going to hear a motion to consider resolution number 628-21?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 628-21. I need a second.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number 628-21. Any discussions on the motions? All right. Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Brimes?
I still want a park also, but aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye, I'm very reluctant. Aye. I feel there's some, I have a lot of questions about this.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
And I vote aye also, so the resolution is approved and adopted. That's it on the commission agenda for tonight. Like I said, Commissioner Pratt would just mention, I'm watching the temperatures drop quick. Hold my little phone here. We might be down to 71 by 11 o'clock. Holy, holy. Get over the windows, put the fans in, all right? So everyone have a good evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Favors to adjourn our commission meeting for the evening? Just throw up your hands. All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. And, you know, who thought we'd all think 90 was a lot cooler than, you know, that we can take 90 anytime now, it's easy pieces. But again, keep eyes on folks in your neighborhood, make sure everyone's getting their water and cool and make sure we're elderly and young are cared for during this heat wave. Have a good evening.
Good job, Megan.